Good evening and welcome to the December 9th, 2014 work session of the Gaston County Board of Commissioners. My name is Tracy Philbeck. I serve as Chairman of the Board as well as Commissioner for the Dallas Township. I'd like to welcome our viewers and thank Time Warner Cable and AT&amp;T for making this possible for our citizens. For television audience, I'd like to present to you your Gaston County Commissioners, beginning on my right.
Good evening, Chad Brown, Riverbend Township.
Good evening, Mickey Price, South Point Township.
Good evening, Jason Williams, Gastonia Township.
And good evening, Joe Carpenter, Crowlers Mountain Township.
Tom Keeger, Gastonia Township.
Thank you, gentlemen. Commissioner Fraley had an emergency he had to attend. He may be here late. Our first item is Judge William Gaston Award Presentation. A very important part of the Board's mission is to encourage citizen participation in county government and community involvement. In 1998, the County Commission established an annual award bearing the name of the county's namesake, Judge William Gaston. To recognize those volunteers who have demonstrated exemplary commitment, dedication, and leadership, since its establishment, the County Commission has honored 50 recipient volunteers for their services to Gaston County and its community. This year, the Board of Commissioners was privileged to present the William Gaston Award to three recipients. Dr. Ansel Overbee was presenting the award at November 13th work session. Tonight, Dr. Ann Hochschild and Ms. Deborah Ali joins us for the presentation of their awards. Will Dr. Ann Hochschild come to the podium along with any family and friends she has with her to receive at this time the William Gaston Award? Commissioner Williams will be making presentations and after Dr. Ann Hochschild, Ms. Deborah Ali. Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Joe. This is my best friend, Beth D. Edwards. I guess, don't you say.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my honor to present this tonight. We received a book of Dr. Hochschild's accomplishments and we had to narrow it down to just one page, which was very, very, very difficult for us to do. So, we condensed it as much as we could while trying to highlight a couple of things. Dr. Ann Hochschild has spent more than two decades as a practicing optometrist and prominent businesswoman in Gaston County. She has reached many people through her eye care practice over the years. However, it could be argued that this community has gotten to know Dr. Hochschild on a more personal level through her tireless contributions and philanthropic service to the citizens of this county. She is a well-known educator, lecturer, author, and lifelong learner. Her leadership abilities, tireless work ethic, and optimistic approach to life in general is an inspiration to us all. A proud Minnesota native, Ann Hochschild arrived in Gaston County in the early 90s. She is the founding and managing partner, clinician, and clinical investigator of Summit Eye Associates and the clinical director and integrative medicine provider at the Summit Wellness Center. Prior to that, she was a founding partner of Gaston Eye Associates. She received her BA in Biology and Theology from St. Olaf College and her Doctor of Optometry degree from the University of Houston College of Optometry. Throughout her career, she has obtained numerous specialized degrees, certifications, and fellowships. Dr. Hochschild currently serves as the Chair of the Gaston County Health and Human Services Board. She is the Chair-elect for the 2015 Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors and is a leading member of the county's first women's philanthropy initiative, Women Optimizing Wellness Through Karamot. She is also a current member of Rotary International, Gaston County Education Foundation, the Healthcare Commission on Healthy Gaston. Her sense of community has led her to hold positions in countless other boards on organizations including Rotary International, the Boys and Girls Clubs of Gaston County Dancing for Future Stars fundraising effort, Hospice of Gaston County, and many, many, many more. Ann's dedicated service to Gaston County and the field of optometry has earned her much-deserved recognition. She has received many honors and awards, including the 2013 JC's Distinguished Service Award, Business Leader of the Year, the 2011 Athena International Leadership Award, the Vision Monday, Most Influential Women, 40 Women with Vision, the 2008, 2009, and 2013 Gaston Gazette's Reader's Choice Award for Best Optometrist, the 2006 America's Top Optometrist Recognition, and she was a 2005 Gaston County Businesswoman of the Year. She is also a 1999 Gaston County Women's Hall of Fame Inductee. Dr. Hochschild, the County Commission is indebted to you for your many years of service and for your continuing efforts to make Gaston County a better, healthier place to live, and we all hope for your steadfast participation will continue for many years to come. On behalf of the County Commission, it is my pleasure to present you the William Gaston Award.
You'll say a few words?
Well, thank you, Commissioner Williams, for those kind words, and there were far too many of them. And I also want to say thank you to the entire Board, but especially to Joe Carpenter, because it was you who reached out to me and invited me to serve on the Health Board and sparked in me a love of public health that I didn't even know that I had. And I've enjoyed serving with your fellow Commissioners, Keeger and Price. And I also want to thank Commissioner Philbeck for giving me the opportunity to chair this Board, not only from the Health Department side, but the consolidated effort and to trust me to put together a very strong Board that is more engaged and probably has one of the highest attendance records. They are just an amazing Board and that any recognition and service really is shared with them and also with the 600 men and women that we serve, this county. When you are an appointed citizen like I am, our number-one job is not operation, dealing with day-to-day challenges, but to be the eyes, ears, and voice of the citizens, and it is truly an honor to do that. January 1st will mark my 22nd anniversary of being at home in Gaston County, and I am so proud to live, work, play, and serve in Gaston County. And I thank the citizens of this county who have allowed me to care for them, trust me with their eye in healthcare, they've served my family well, put bread on our tables, and those of our employees, and to trust us with their healthcare is beyond many words of thanks that I could think of. But, they say the success of a man is the woman behind the man. Well, in my case, it is the man behind the woman. Joe Davis has had to do more than his share of laundry and come home to uncooked meals or cold meals, and there is not a thing that I could do professionally, personally, without the love and respect and support of this great man. And standing behind me is Beth Standforth, who is my Gastonia sister, representing my family and friends and the employees of Summit Eye Associates. So, not only to you Commissioners, but to the fine people of Gaston County, thank you for this recognition.
Thank you. Who told you I was a class? Oh, thank you. Thank you again.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Hochschild. Ms. Deborah Ali, if you and any guests or friends, family, anybody willing to be seen with you up here? Bring it on, bring 'em on. We got room. That's right. We got room. We've got room. All right. Wow. I think this is a testament to Deborah. I don't think we've ever had a crowd this big for something like this. She's special, that's right. That's right. Deborah Ali and four generations of her family have been a part of Gaston County since the 1960s. She graduated from Hunter Huss High School and, like many of us, grew up on Tony's Ice Cream, Sundrop, and Christmas Town, USA. She is a longtime member of St. Stevens AME Zion Church. Deborah is truly passionate about the well-being of Gaston County and its citizens, and she attributes her dedication to community service to her desire to pay forward her appreciation for all this county has done for her. Deborah has been the President and CEO of the United Way of Gaston County since 2009. Her focus on developing and maintaining donor relationships in order to raise awareness and funds for community initiatives has enabled her to better serve Gaston County residents. She has been responsible for raising and distributing $7 million in this county through donor companies and individuals over the past six years. And she redesigned the organization's business model to incorporate measurements and outcomes on community impact, which focus on the individuals served and the lives changed by the funded programs. She has served on a multitude of boards and committees in Gaston County and has helped lead the charge to change the way Gaston County funds nonprofits through her leadership on the Family Advisory Board. She is a member of the Board of Directors for the Gaston Regional Chamber of Commerce, Gaston Together, Gaston County Healthcare Commission, Transportation Advisory Board, Health Net Gaston, the Novant Health Metro Advisory Board, Wells Fargo Advisory Board, and is the Chair of Gaston County Emergency Food and Shelter. Her extensive list of involvement with organizations and civic groups includes current or past service with the Rotary Club of Gastonia, the Employment Security Commission of Gaston County, the Gastonia Faith Network, St. Stevens AME Zion Church Budget and Finance, and Chair of Piedmont Chapter of the Links. I know Deborah. From Martha. That's what my wife says. I know Deborah as a 2011 graduate of Leadership Gaston. The best class that's come through Leadership Gaston, by the way. Mr. Dobbin's is also an alumni with us that year. Deborah graduated from North Carolina Central University in Durham, North Carolina with a Bachelor of Science in Commerce and Accounting. She has held various positions throughout her diverse and distinguished career and has amassed many outstanding accomplishments in leadership, marketing, finance, and social services. She has actively participated in numerous leadership training programs for the United Way, as well as Leadership Diversity Institute, Community Building Institute, and American Leadership Fellow through the Lee Institute. Deborah, we are most grateful for your vision and innovative approach to addressing the needs of our citizens and for helping to make Gaston County a better place to live. On behalf of the County Commission, it is my pleasure to present you the William Gaston Award.
If you want to introduce anybody?
Oh, my gosh. Okay, let's take this picture right here with the posse. In that way, okay. Wait, we got one more. Excellent. Okay. Go ahead. Oh, my gosh. Commissioner Williams, I can call you Jason, and fellow Commissioners, thank you so much for this honor. This is home for me. I love this community and the things that I do in it is because I love this community and what it represents and what it stands for. But I'll also be sharing this award with the folks behind me. I have my family with me, my husband, my parents, my nieces and nephews and cousins and aunts, and I also have my church family with me, my pastor, Board of Trustees from St. Stevens. Without these folks and their prayers, I couldn't do what I do in Gaston County without their love and support. And I just want to say thank you for this. This will be treasured and put in a prominent place where I can talk about the wonderful work that you all do, that you allowed me to do in this community. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Wow. Yeah. All right. Here we go. Oh, wait. I can put it in there. You can go back.
Let me get my... It's... We have some folks we want to recognize for certificates of appreciation of service, and it is a great pleasure for the Gaston County Commissioners to honor citizens who have unselfishly given of their time, talent, skills, and energies in service as an appointee to one of our Boards or Commissions. This type of service is the foundation for citizen involvement in our county government and is helping shape the future of our community. We gratefully acknowledge the work and the following individuals and certificates of appreciation have been forwarded to them. Matthew Knup, Jesse Watts, Earl Lingerfeld from the Fireman's Relief and Trustee for the Fund and their trustees.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. At this time, we have no citizens signed up for recognition. Our first or next item is an Extension and Community Association Presentation, 2014 Activity Summary. Ms. Kathy Stokes, ECA Quiltmakers Club Secretary. Thank you so very much.
Thank you for the opportunity to present here today. Let the presentation begin. I am here...
Just going to be supportive.
We are here today, and if you look on the side there, you'll see several rows of ladies here who are...
Can you pull your mic down a little bit, please?
Sure.
There you go.
Is that better?
That's better.
Okay, great. We have several rows of ladies sitting over there who are here to support and show the support of your efforts as well as those of the ECA. I am here today to tell you about the Gaston Extension and Community Association, which is a service organization located here in Gastonia. Our motto is "Hands to Work, Hearts to Serve." The Extension and Community Association, referred to as ECA, is a state-affiliated volunteer group. We are supported by the North Carolina Cooperative Extension and work to strengthen families and improve the quality of life throughout our community. Much of what we do is about building relationships, which truly fuels the flame of volunteerism throughout Gaston County. As you will see, the Gaston County ECA does a lot. We help with educational programs provided by the staff of the Cooperative Extension. We work with the community organizations and nonprofit groups to provide programs that support health, education, and quality-of-life activities. We teach a variety of affordable craft and life skills classes such as ceramics, paper crafting, sewing, and quilting. The numbers. We are currently comprised of eight clubs, which is approximately 106 members. Look at the numbers here for a moment, would you please? That comprises 12,422 annual volunteer hours, translated to dollars, that is $275,023 of services. We haven't even touched on the goods yet. That is more than a quarter million dollars. Most of the clubs meet at the Lucille Tatum Center. We reach approximately 650 residents. We've offered over 130 community classes. We've knitted and sewn 800 ear warmers, 400 knit caps. We've supported and donated to national and international organizations, as well as local community organizations, which you will learn more about in a moment. Last year, the ECA celebrated 100 years of service. From the beginning, ECA was an outreach effort of the land-grant university system to help rural communities grow and preserve food. ECA started with home canning activities in Gaston County during 1914. I'm pleased to tell you that we continue that same service and class. Girls learned how to plant, cultivate, and can tomatoes. The NC State University hired Jane McKimmon to oversee club activities across the state at that time. The ECA developed during the Depression, therefore, much of the community activities were done to provide food for families. Home demonstrations such as properly using a home canner were an important function of the clubs. Believe it or not, we still offer that service as well. Clubs began to expand activities to further meet the needs of community families. Gaston County's Meals on Wheels program originated as a community initiative through the Gaston County Council on the Aged during 1972. ECA was instrumental in this program. Members prepared, packaged, and delivered five meals each week. ECA members continue to work in this effort as well today. The program received funding through the Gaston County Office on Aging as a result of a three-month feasibility study supported by the ECA. Separately, in response to an ECA member being murdered in her own home and the defendant being released on technicalities, Helen Bass organized approximately 1,000 women to protest about the crime rates and court systems in the Gaston County. This grassroots group became known as Concerned Citizens for Justice, representing Gaston County at the state level and resulted in being a model for national court system programs. The Union Road Branch Library, we helped there also. The Gaston County ECA members were very involved in supporting the building of the Union Road Branch Library by assisting with land donations, furnishings, and providing funding. If you go by, you will see that there is actually a quilt hanging in this library made by one of our very own members. In the 80s, members supported formalized education for members and their family members by providing educational loans. This activity transitioned to scholarships, which are provided annually. As you can see, we have two of our scholarship recipients on the screen. Oh, excuse me. Sorry. I'm missing a slide.
It was there.
It was there? There we go. Okay. During 2014, two $500 scholarships were provided to two Gaston County students pictured above, who began college this fall. ECA continues to provide scholarships through fundraising activities funded by and fueled by its volunteers. Make a Difference Day. The annual volunteers projects have included Least of These Gaston, Nursing Homes, Meals on Wheels, and DSS Foster Children. Make a Difference Day is a nationally-recognized volunteer day supported by ECA. This year, we did support Least of These Gaston with non-perishable items and toiletries. Previously, as you can see by the photo on your screen, handmade bags filled with supplies were provided to all Gaston Meals on Wheels participants, and well over 1,000 pairs of socks were collected for nursing homes and needy children. Annual Pie Tasting Day. Hope you all will join us. Pie Day continues to be an annual ECA tradition. This event provides an opportunity for community fellowship and a chance to learn about ECA activities while tasting a variety of main dish and dessert pies. This event is used as an annual fundraising activity, as I mentioned. The ingredients note, the ingredients for these over 80 pies that are served are donated by our volunteers, as are the hours required to prepare and serve them. 4-H Super Summer Programs. The ECA continues to provide hands-on learning opportunities with youth through the 4-H Super Summer Program and other youth classes offered throughout the year. This year, kids engaged in a variety of cooking, sewing, and ceramic classes. The Quiltmakers ECA collaborates with Gaston Hospice during the year to help hospice family members in creating a special memory project, such as quilts or pillows. This project is a very powerful way to process grief and support and help individuals deal with the loss of a loved one. We continue to receive positive feedback from members of previous year's events. Scrappers Unlimited is one of our newest clubs. This group has partnered with the Gaston County Library and Camp Surtoma to provide scrapbooking classes, as well as support awareness of multiple sclerosis. Our West Gastonia ECA focuses on supporting nursing homes, nursing home residents with goodie bags, and throughout various holidays, such as Christmas. The Quiltmakers ECA organizes a biannual quilt show, which is a fundraiser, during the spring at the Citizens Resource Center located in Dallas. This effort improves community awareness of the ECA and its programs, serves as a fundraiser, as well as providing the opportunity for those who have not had the benefit to learn more about quilting and sewing. Quiltmakers also donates quilts through a number of other efforts. The ECA partners with both the Gaston County Museum and the Gaston County Library to educate residents about the history of ECA and its impact on the Gaston County. Free copies of the ECA Centennial Book were donated. Ordinary Women: Extraordinary Service provided, as well as exhibits displayed throughout many libraries across the county. Our Belle Heights ECA supports many community projects, especially local schools, with supplies, hands-on learning activities, and handmade chair totes for local elementary school. Our Martha Goble ECA engages individuals with visual disabilities in lifelong learning activities and community volunteerism. Happy Potters is not only known for its ceramics projects, but also for serving individuals in crisis. This club supports other community nonprofit organizations year-round, such as Crisis Assistance Ministries, the Shelter, and the Salvation Army. In just one year, 300 Warm-Up America Afghans were assembled and distributed to Gaston County Habitat for Humanity, Ronald McDonald Houses, and the American Red Cross for disaster victims across the United States. It's a lot of work, actually, involved in making one of those Afghans, all those little As you have seen in this presentation, ECA has a strong focus on lifelong learning. Members provide life skill classes and work with the Cooperative Extension to offer health and wellness programs to residents. Food preservation, local foods, diabetes and chronic disease management, and fall prevention classes are offered on a continual basis at the Lucille Tatum Center. The information shown on these slides is only a sampling of the many activities taking place. Each month, there are multiple service activities taking place across the groups. Members participate to make these events happen. As you saw in the number of volunteer hours and the dollar value provided from the services, a lot of time donated goods and hard work are given by our members. Gaston County ECA has a proud heritage of leadership and visionaries. We are proud to recognize the accomplishments of Ms. Lucille Tatum, who worked for the Extension for 44 years and for whom the building is named, and Ms. Helen Bass, as two of the 13 original inductees into the North Carolina Family and Consumer Science Hall of Fame. ECA may look different than it did when it was started in 1913, but it continues to focus on the same mission of strengthening families and our community. Health issues such as obesity, the needs of youth such as children and foster care are just a couple of examples. We invite residents to learn more about ECA by stopping by the Lucille Tatum Center or contacting us on the phone. We are also on Facebook. There are many ways to become involved, and we have a lot of fun, as well as work hard. On behalf of the Gaston County ECA, I would like to thank our elected officials for the continued support you provide, you have provided for this organization. We continue to strive to build up our community and strengthen families throughout The information shown on these slides is only a sampling of the many activities taking place. Each month, there are multiple service activities taking place across the groups. Members participate to make these events happen. As you saw in the number of volunteer hours and the dollar value provided from the services, a lot of time donated goods and hard work are given by our members. Gaston County ECA has a proud heritage of leadership and visionaries. We are proud to recognize the accomplishments of Ms. Lucille Tatum, who worked for the extension for 44 years and for whom the building is named, and Ms. Helen Bass, as two of the 13 original inductees into the North Carolina Family and Consumer Science Hall of Fame. ECA may look different than it did when it was started in 1913, but it continues to focus on the same mission of strengthening families and our community. Health issues such as obesity, the needs of youth such as children and foster care are just a couple of examples. We invite residents to learn more about ECA by stopping by the Lucille Tatum Center or contacting us on the phone. We are also on Facebook. There are many ways to become involved, and we have a lot of fun, as well as work hard. On behalf of the Gaston County ECA, I would like to thank our elected officials for the continued support you provide, you have provided for this organization. We continue to strive to build up our community and strengthen families throughout Gaston County. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from the board? Commissioner Carpenter?
No questions, because I'm very familiar with the activities y'all do. And, you know, you quietly go about, maybe not sometimes quietly, but you quietly go about doing a service for this community that makes this, you know, part of making Gaston County a wonderful place to live, work, and play. And I want to thank all of you for the work that you do. Ms. Helen Jenkins-Bass was a good friend. I grew up with her. She's just a few years older, but went to church with her. And also, Ms. Helen Funtelberger-Ryan, who passed a couple of years ago, I guess now. But both of them worked very long in the clubs, and just want to say thank you for all that you do.
Thank you very much for your kind words. January 23rd, we will have our Pie Tasting Day. Hope you will join us. Thank you again.
Did you have a question? If you lady, if you, I know you wanted to get some pictures. If they want to come up and stand right here, if they want to, you can get a picture.
Hey, by the way, we have a bake sale right for each.
For those that don't know, these ladies, every year during Christmas time, cook the commission, a home-cooked meal, and we each get a cake, and we're very thankful for that. Our next item, and I don't know if she'll be able to top the cakes the ladies have made, but is a legislative update presentation by Ms. Debbie Clary, our Governmental Relations Representative. Ms. Clary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Manager. I certainly appreciate that, and you're exactly right. I can't top the pie tasting, the cake bake sale, or any of those wonderful things, but I can give you a lot of, of, may I say, political bull, so there you go. We have, we have another one of those political sessions coming up in January, and prior to, as we do each time, we try to get with our chairman and manager and commissioners and try to put together our legislative agenda, and it is in your packet tonight, the 2015 Legislative Agenda. The agenda is, that is before you, is, does not detail each specific item. There will be more detail added to each one as the session develops in January, February, and I'll keep you informed as we go along. I'll run through the agenda very quickly with you. Travel and tourism. Would recommend and appreciate a support resolution for travel and tourism that would include support of Crowder's Mountain, as well as the Mountain Island State Educational Forest. These are two treasures we have here in Gaston County, and we need to continue to seek funding for these two entities, as well as some expansion for the educational forest that we would, we would like to see. Economic development. The EDC request priority, of course, is probably the largest thing that we do each year. The J Dig, Job Development Incentive Grants, are something that very instrumental to Donny Hicks and his team here in Gaston County, as well as lowering an eventual elimination of the North Carolina corporate tax that is on its way down, and we would like to see the elimination, or at least to get competitive with the rest of the states in our region. Continuation of support for the workforce development, state investment in technology infrastructure, as well as state investment in rural infrastructure of water and sewer. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for serving on that board and being able to highlight the western Piedmont area of the state there. We also look at the state investment in education that will help promote a premier community college system, which we do have one of the premier community colleges in the state that does an excellent, excellent job working with industry. To maintain funding, economic development programs of the Golden Leaf Foundation would like to see also two new items, as you'll notice, that you haven't seen before, and those have been added by our economic development team, and that's to maintain a competitive aviation fuel tax in order to create a competitive environment at the Charlotte Airport. That is something that you'll see statewide on every economic development agenda this session, as well as supporting the creation of a site and building development fund. It is a subsidized loan fund that would create access to capital for land acquisition, building construction, or building renovation in order for us to be able to market property ready for lease or sell for industry job expansion. This was House Bill 1135 in the 2013 session, and it failed to get a good hearing. So we think the bill with a little tweaking this year, as Mr. Hicks brought forward to me, the little tweaking on that piece of legislation, and we feel very good that we'll have something that we might could get past this session. We've set up a meeting coming up very soon with the new Speaker of the House to discuss that particular piece of legislation and his support for that legislation. Also, the support moving on, a resolution for the support of historic preservation rebates. That's also new to your agenda, because you've seen the tax incentives in the past years, and now they, I think the Historic North Carolina Preservation Society has decided that probably the best thing to do is ask for a rebate system, and there's a full explanation of that that will be coming to you. The tax incentives will expire this year, so we really desperately need this to happen. We do have a project that you may be aware of in Mount Holly. It's the old Woodlawn Mill, and that Woodlawn Mill has been now given to North Carolina Preservation Society, and my understanding, I've met with Ted Alexander, as well as Myrick Howard, the president of the Preservation Society, and since it is in their possession now, they are looking, if we get these rebates passed, that's another economic development project for us, and my understanding was that it was given to them. So it will be a great opportunity at that particular mill as well. And I know the Loray, we're all very excited about that, and that would not have happened for Gaston County without those preservation tax credits. Also, to support the formation of an education funding study commission that would study the disparities in education funding between counties, and to make a recommendation to the General Assembly. We would request that legislators form the commission and make it up of stakeholders in education funding that would include legislators, as well as commissioners, local school board members, as well as charter school board members. And this is something that was a recommendation of the Public School Forum of North Carolina, and was brought to me by Commissioner Carpenter. Thank you. I've done a little bit more research on that, and Commissioner Carpenter and I go way back to whenever we've had this type of study commission previously that traveled the state and looked at funding for capital needs, and this is to look at funding for education in general because of the increased needs and the competitive salaries of teachers, and especially the situation that we're in in Gaston County with trying to compete with Mecklenburg County with those teacher salaries. So we are, we are looking at that, and we would get a member of our local delegation or our local delegation, you'll be asking them to file this legislation for the study commission. The fifth thing on your agenda is to support local appointments to statewide boards and commissions. Commissioners would encourage more appointments of Gaston County residents who are interested and would volunteer to serve on the statewide boards. We have always had someone serve on Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, and in past years, we've had people on the Board of Transportation, and we need those voices back on those boards. So those are things that we're watching very closely for openings that come up, and encourage the community with anyone that's willing to serve and would step forward. The Local Government Commission is extremely important, as well as the Housing Finance Agency. Those are organizations that we need a voice on in Raleigh, so we're keeping our eyes on those commitment, on those appointments, and trying to get someone committed to those. Item number six, the County Commission Association Initiatives. As always, we will monitor the bills of the Commissioners Association of their legislative agenda. I have the 2014 agenda, but the 2015 won't be published until January, so we'll have that full agenda and follow it. Lottery funding, I'm sure will be on that agenda as well, to protect the proceeds from lottery ticket sales to be preserved for education spending, as it was originally intended. Transportation funding, continue efforts of funding transportation infrastructure in North Carolina based on statistical need criteria, and to support the funding transportation improvements that are required for new business and industry. There was a new fund set up this year. Representative Torbett was very instrumental in doing that, to be able to tap into those funds for infrastructure that we need to lead into industry. So we've looked at and watching those funds very closely in industry recruitment. Number nine, to support the current behavioral health LME, MCO model. To continue preserving this current model for public behavioral health management and Partners, as you better know it, is very important to our county, for the, I guess the biggest reason is the savings to taxpayers and the predictability for Medicaid spending on behavioral health. You haven't seen increases. You've heard about the Medicaid budget and the explosion in the Medicaid budget. Well, the managed care organizations, Partners is a leading organization in the state, and basically, they have held the spending on Medicaid for behavioral health for three years. So that's, that's very important, and it's crucial for us to support that so that it doesn't come back that there's additional funds needed from the county. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions from the board? Commissioner Carpenter?
Deborah, just a couple of comments. I don't know how much people realize the maintain a competitive aviation fuel tax in order to create competitive environment at the Charlotte Airport is. I have sat in on the Charlotte Regional Partnership meeting, and we had a presentation from the representative from, well, US Air, but American Airlines, and the Charlotte Airport is so important for us in our economic development. But with that tax that the state has on aviation fuel that goes into the general fund, I don't think it does anything for aviation, but they're, if they can get fuel in, say, Atlanta, then those especially international flights, they're going to fill up and go there. We losing out the one to San Paulo, Brazil now, and I think it probably has something to do with that fuel cost, because it's, you know, in a year's time, it amounts to millions of dollars. So I think we need to focus on that, because that Charlotte Airport is a reason that we now are getting some of the industry that we're getting, and we need to keep that up. And as you mentioned, the one on the support for education, and I don't think people realize that the state education system is the state's education system. It's the state's. And the counties originally was to participate in building and maintaining facilities, but over the years, that's kind of got blurred, and the counties have supplemented. But the problem is that some counties can supplement so much more than others. An example is Gaston County. If you take the total tax value of all of our property, and you divide the number of students in it, it's somewhere around $400,000 that per student. But in Charlotte, it's twice that, it's over $800,000. And the ones like Currituck and Dare County down on the beach and probably Buncombe County, where you have a lot of tourists, you don't have as many kids, there's just over $3 million they've got to work with for one student, to pay for that student. And so this thing of the counties paying so much, that needs to be looked at, and that's the reason I asked for this study commission, and make it up of stakeholders from across the state, legislators and county commissioners, school board members, probably city and a few others that need to be represented there, and look at the tax structure, because it's not fair for the citizens of, say, a county like Gaston, and some worse than ours. You know, they've, some have got less than $300,000 to deal with per student. So our tax rate is high, that's one reason it's high. The other one is the Department of Social Service, the same thing happens there. We've got more people depending on this tax structure we have, and so it puts a great burden on us, and this board has to set a tax rate to pay for all of that. So we think that some more, looking at the tax structure so that that can be made more equitable for the students, citizens across the state. And I got one other I checked. Transportation funding, I know the governor made some effort, but it's sort of a patchwork, I think. It doesn't have the long-term vision that we need for transportation in the state. For many years now, we've been getting behind on improving the infrastructure within our transportation system, and so while I commend him for trying to do something about that, it's not long-term. And in the widening of '85, I think it says it can do it by 2024 or something, that won't work. We had the Garden Parkway funded, which traffic would be flowing on it next year if it hadn't been interfered with. So I'm just real upset about that part of it, because it doesn't, doesn't answer the problem that we have. The citizens of, the leadership of Gaston County for over 20 years has had that project as number one, and they're going to take the politics out of it, but they put the politics somewhere else, and it's just not going to work long-term, and I'm, I'm real concerned about the future. We need a long-term vision for this county and for this state, and so that's all I want to say about that.
Commissioner Brown?
But anyway, thank you, and we will, we will continue to work on this.
Commissioner Brown?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Debbie, for coming. It means a lot to see this come. I guess my question is about the number eight as well. Will we be able to get a more in-depth look at what that funding could go for? I know at one point, they were talking about, I know we did the bridges last year, in the last session, they were talking about doing some bridges. Is this going to be mainly just for, even though it says new roads, is this supporting roads that are currently in existence that we're driving on, but it does say new roads that we're talking about building in the future that we've already have planning involved in, or is this going to be new, totally out-of-the-box type work? I'd like to get some more information on that, if you don't mind, please.
I'll be happy to provide you with further detail.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you, Ms. Clary. Are there any other matters at this time before the board? Thank you, gentlemen. This concludes your work session for tonight. Our next work session is January 13, 2015, at 6:00 PM at the Harley B. Gaston Junior Public Forum Courthouse. The rescheduled County Commission meeting will follow. Thank you for watching. If you have questions or comments, please telephone our clerk, Donna Buff, at 704-866-3196, and share them. At this time, I'll call the regularly scheduled board meeting to order. At this time, Commissioner Williams will lead us in invocation, and Commissioner Brown At this time, Commissioner Williams will lead us in invocation, and Commissioner Brown will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, gentlemen.
Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, God, and the beautiful day you've given us. Lord, we pray that you would impart wisdom on us tonight, Lord, as we do business on behalf of the county. Lord, we pray that you would provide guidance in the matters that are before us. Lord, most importantly, we want to take time to thank you, Lord, for the reason we celebrate the upcoming holiday, for sending your son to die for us for our sins. Lord, we thank you for that. Lord, I pray that we would do your will. I pray for our citizens, Lord, those that are in need, Lord, those that are hurting, those that have various issues, God. We pray for them. Lord, we pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
The County Commission will take citizen comment on the following issues. One, rezoning case. Anthony and Karen Drum are the applicants, parcel numbers 174898. Two municipal appointments, City of Belmont, Belmont Board of Adjustments, and the Belmont Planning and Zoning Board, ETJ. Town of Cramerton, Cramerton Planning and Zoning Board of Adjustment, ETJ. Two designations of historic properties, 1916 Belmont Piedmont and Northern Railroad Station, and around 1870 Lent Springs House. And four, to convey land in the South Ridge Business Park for an economic development project. Before we go into public hearing, let me outline the rules of procedure for the hearing. Citizens wishing to make comment will be recognized by the chair and then requested to step to the microphone for their comments. Citizens will state their name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Questions shall be directed to the chair for response, and the chair shall rule on all points of order during the hearings. At this time, do I hear a motion to go into public hearing? Motion is made by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Carpenter. Any discussion? All in favor? We are now in public hearing. Our first item is a zoning map change. The Commission will take comment on rezoning case Z14-08. Anthony and Karen Drum are the applicants, the parcel, property parcel numbers 174898. At this time, I'll ask Mr. Willie King, our Community Development Planner, for comments. Mr. King?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission and Planning Board. Thanks, Mr. Chair, for the background information as to rezoning application Z1408. Again, the applicant is Mr. and Mrs. Anthony Drum, and Mr. Drum is in the audience tonight. Thank you. Again, the request is to rezone one parcel, and the request is from the I-3 Exclusive Industrial Zoning District, which is also in the CH and US overlays. CH is corridor highway, and US is urban standards, to the C-3 General Commercial District. And regardless of the rezoning outcome, the overlays will remain in place. The subject property, and you will see it in the map, contains approximately 27.4 acres. However, Mr. Drum would like to rezone only a portion of the subject property, which is approximately 5.1 acres. The current use on the property is a vehicle salvage yard. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
You got it going, Willie?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, good.
And real quickly, I'll be out of your way. You do have a map that has four maps on it, and I'm just going to orient you clockwise. The first map in the bottom right-hand corner, again, you see northeastern Gaston County. And there's a red dot. Again, this is going to be off of Lucia River Bend Highway, NC 273. And again, the tip of my pen at the circle represents the approximate location of the subject property. And again, you're looking at northeastern Gaston County. As we move over, again, clockwise to the left, you're looking in the aerial. Again, you see the main corridor, which is NC 273, Lucia River Bend Highway. You can see surrounding properties, and the subject property is this green outline as I show by the tip of my pen. Again, NC 273, you see the surrounding properties. In fact, remember, it's a portion of the property to be rezoned, and you can see the existing operation on the subject property, again, a vehicle salvage yard. And to the east, you can see the NC 16, the new highway, to the east of the subject property. As we move up, we're going to look at the zoning districts. Again, you see the street network, NC 273. In red is the subject property. The subject property is currently zoned I-3, and the request is to the C-3 district. But again, you can see C-3, I-2, R-1 surrounding the properties. And down to the parcel level, you can see the pattern of the US overlay, as well as the CH corridor overlay that runs on either side of 273. Our final map, again zoning, but again, it outlines the subject property that's in green. And the subject property is zoned I-3, and again, you see the surrounding zoning pattern. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I conclude, as to the comprehensive plan, the property is located in a northeast small area. As to the statement of consistency, with consideration of the comp plan goals and objectives, it is the opinion of staff that the proposed map amendment is consistent with the comp plan. Municipal coordination was not required because of the location. No phone calls were received by the office prior to the hearing. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. At this time, are there any citizens wishing to make comment? Are there any citizens wishing to make comment? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
I guess I am. My name is Anthony L. Drum. My address is 13924 Lucia River Bend Highway.
Thank you, Mr. Drum.
I moved to Gaston County, fortunately, in 1971, and have been here paying taxes ever I brought a business with me and built it in this, at this location, and now I would like to ask for it to be rezoned partially to the commercial zoning so that I can bring another business into Gaston County for us.
Thank you, Mr. Drum. Any other citizens wishing to make comment on this application? Any questions from the Planning Board? Any questions from the Board of Commissioners? Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. King, please.
Yes, sir.
I did receive a few phone calls about this particular property. I think I spoke to Mr. Smith about one of them with the movement of some land, but I think it was under an acre or something, Mr. Smith had explained. The other question I have, and I guess this would be for Mr. Drum as well, I just wanted to put it on record, is stating, some of the citizens around there, and I think I had spoken with you about this before, Willie, are concerned about what it looks like from the aesthetic value. I know that's not part of the planning process, but they were a little upset about some of the things that were going on from the prior business, and want to know about this new business, they're going to have those cars setting out. So I wanted to let that be on the record, a statement of, these are some of the concerns for the community around there. They're starting to change some things. I know across the street, we've looked at some things there as well, to try to make that a little more aesthetically pleasing. So I had just my one wish that I would ask Mr. Drum and anything he could do to try to help that corridor at your convenience, to please help that, sir. Thank you, Mr. King.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Any other questions from the Board of Commissioners? Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, the Planning Board can be excused to First Appearance Courtroom 2029 for deliberations. If you're an applicant, you can join them. Thank you, gentlemen. Your next item is extraterritorial jurisdiction appointments, ETJ. The County Commission will take citizen comment concerning applicants submitted at or before the public hearing for one appointment to the Belmont Board of Adjustments, and for one appointment to the Belmont Planning and Zoning Board representing the ETJ. The Belmont City Council has recommended Mr. Kenneth L. Taylor for both positions. Are there additional applications to be received at this time? Any citizens wishing to make comment? Any comments or questions from Commissioners? This time, I'll, you have a question? Okay. Commissioner Carpenter makes the motion, seconded by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. The County Commission will take citizen comment concerning applicants submitted at or before the public hearing for one appointment to the Cramerton Planning and Zoning Board of Adjustments representing the extraterritorial jurisdiction. The Cramerton Board of Commissioners has recommended Mr. Dean Bowen. Are there additional applicants to be received at this time? Any citizen comments? Any comments or questions from the Commission? This time, I entertain a motion, motion made by Commissioner Carpenter, seconded by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? I'll quickly say, I voted against the last one, I will vote against this. It's not against these individuals personally, but I do think the ETJs are antiquated and don't really allow proper representation for some of our citizens. That said, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Our next item, item number four, is Historic Preservation, 1916 Belmont Piedmont and Northern Railroad Station. The Commission will take comment on designation of a 1916 Belmont PNN Railroad Station, North Main Street, Belmont, North Carolina, as historic property. Before we take comment, I'll ask Mr. John Russell.
Actually, he's not here, I'm here.
Okay. I'll ask Ms. Lucy Penniger from Historic Preservation to provide a brief overview. Ms. Penniger.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. We have two properties tonight. I'll just address this one first. This is a wonderful piece of property right in downtown Belmont, the PNN Railroad Station. It has a great history to it, and it helps to tell the story of the railroads and how important they were to the growth of this county. This particular railroad station, of course, as you know, the PNN was an electric railroad, which is different from all the rest of them. In fact, the people in Raleigh tell us it was the only regional electric railroad in the state. So that's very important to our town, all of our towns in our county. But this particular one was also, this station was designed by C.C. Hook, who was a noted outstanding architect from Charlotte, and there's just a lot of good history to this. And the property owners are here tonight with us, and we're just really excited to get this one listed. We want to protect it.
At this time, are there any citizens wishing to make comment? Any comments or questions from the Commission? This time, I entertain a motion. The motion will read, "An ordinance designating the 1916 Belmont Piedmont Northern Railroad Station as an historic site." The motion is made by Commissioner Price, seconded by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is unanimous. Our next item is Historic Preservation, I think, I hope I'm pronouncing this right, 1870, is it Lent's?
Lent Springs.
Lent Springs House. The Commission will take comment on the designation of the around 1870 Lent Springs House, 16 Oak Grove Street, Mount Holly, North Carolina, as historic property. Before we take comment, I'll ask Ms. Lucy Penniger, Historic Preservation, to provide a brief overview. Ms. Penniger.
Okay. Again, the property owner is with us here tonight, too. This house, we could not actually pinpoint the exact date that it was built, and a lot of times with historic houses, you name them by the person who built it, and then an important person who lived there, or who was important to that structure. And these two names are very significant to Mount Holly history. Mr. Paul Lentz had served as the mayor of Mount Holly at one time, and then Mr. Junior Springs had two businesses on Main Street that were right close to each other. So he was a big businessman in Mount Holly, and most important to that town, too. This house was moved in order to be saved. You might have remembered this, it's a nice big house, a nine-room house, and Food Line was going to go on that spot. And so Preservation North Carolina jumped in and helped us with this one, and we got it moved just about a block away, so it's not far from its original site, and it's been restored, and it's a commercial piece of property now, so it's given back to the community, and it looks wonderful. So we think that it's one that deserves being listed, too.
Thank you, Ms. Penniger. Are there any citizens wishing to make comment? Any questions or comments from the Commission? Commissioner Brown?
I just had one, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Ms. Penniger may be able. When we give these designations, and I know she said that they jumped in on a Food Line site, is this something that could stop commerce from coming into our community or new business because of, this may be in a land designated area? I know we've had some issues with things that are coming in. So what does the designation give it as far as a whole?
I'd be glad to answer that. This house in particular was going to be demolished, and so now it's back on the tax rolls, it's contributing to the tax base of Mount Holly and to the county. The property, where it was moved from, is a nice big commercial shopping center now, and this house is just a block away from that. So it didn't take away from anything, in fact, it added to the commerce of the town. What designating it means is that the lot that it sits on and that particular structure itself can't be, we think it's so significant that the property owner gives up the right to alter it severely or demolish in it without giving us notice of it. And we have 365 days to try to work out something else, maybe move it somewhere else if it had to be, in order to save that structure. That property owner also, when I said gives up the right to significantly alter the property, it's really just alterations on the outside, not on the inside. They can do what they want to on the inside of the structure, but like, for instance, the Lent Springs House has a big porch that wraps all the way around the front and the side of the house, and if they would want to enclose that porch, they would have to get a certificate of appropriateness from us. So they kind of give up some of their, you know, what they can do to the structure, but we hope that that structure will remain because it teaches a great history lesson. a great history lesson from the street.
And I guess what my number one concern would be is if the homeowner wanted to, say someone come in, had a nice piece of property on a corner, and you had some big developer who wanted to come in and take it, would that be a 365-day program if they had to wait in order to buy that piece of property?
They could buy it. Anybody can own it, but they couldn't demolish it without giving us time to try to work something out. At the end of that 365 days, they could still demolish it. And if it's a piece of property next door, we don't have any say-so at all on the property next door. Does that answer what you?
I'm going to vote for this, just so we, on the record, but from now on, historic preservation type of easement coming into this, I'd like to have some information about, if it's been moved, then that I don't see an issue. But if it's something that sits on a corner piece of property that the homeowner has a historic designation, then all of a sudden, they're looking to get rid of, and it's 365 days, that sort of puts everybody in a debacle, so to speak. So I'd like to get some more information. I guess maybe if you could just address that to the manager on what those parameters are, just so we could look at it, please. Not that I, I'm all for historic preservation, but I want to make sure that we're putting our apples out there to keep everything up as, I know we have some aesthetically pleasing places, but we have some that are not as well. So that's one of the things I want to try to look into. But thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Any other questions from the board?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Commissioner Carpenter, seconded by Commissioner Williams. The motion is an ordinance designating the Lentz Spring House circa 1870 as an historic property. Any discussions? All in favor? Motion is unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Penniger. Next item, item number six, is to convey land in the South Ridge Business Park. Commission will take comment to convey land in the South Ridge Business Park owned by the county for an economic development project pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 158-7.1, Project Rainbow. At this time, I'll ask Mr. Donnie Hicks, EDC Director, for comments. Mr. Hicks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You may remember that a couple months ago, we came with a man named Kobe Razner who talked about a project that we wanted to put in Belmont. It's a company from the Middle East that does plastic resin compounding. We had the project virtually complete in Belmont. We ran into a site problem that we can fix, but we couldn't fix in the timeframe that they needed to make their decision. So we dropped back and moved to a site in Bessemer City that will accommodate the facility. We had relatively few site options. It has to be rail-served, so we couldn't just put it anywhere in the county. And in fact, we would have had no options to put this in the county had the commissioners not allocated funding to buy this site six or seven years ago and then committed to build the road and do some pre-grading work out there. Without that investment by the county, this project would be in another location, maybe not even in the state. So we appreciate all the work that you've allowed us to do over the years to be competitive. I'll make this fairly quick. Our proposal is the same thing. We're going to get a site development grant of $300,000. This money will be taken out of their normal grant that they would receive through our investment grant program. So basically, we're putting it up front to try to help them defray the cost of the rail spur. A little bit of an unusual move, but when we move from the PNN line to Bessemer City, the cost of that rail spur increased dramatically. It's no longer just running it on flat ground next to the main line of the rail. They have to cross a road. We have a lot of grade transition, so the rail lines can be substantially more expensive. We were able to get an approval, Bessemer City, to also do a site development grant last night of $100,000. So they're doing their fair share to try to locate the project. I'll refer to the Elmo pretty quickly. You'll see, this is the Dole facility. We located in 2005. We constructed this road in 2007, acquired this 50 acres. It's been mass graded. They're proposing to buy this roughly 17-acre site from us. This shows, this drawing shows how we'll serve it with rail. Rail line will be built, attached to Norfolk Southern and will come from the Gastonia side into the facility. This is 180,000 square feet. The initial building will be about 100. So this is what we think they will expand to in a relatively near future. This is a closer-in view of the entire site. We're proposing to sell them all of the property inside of this red line that represents about 18 acres. They're going to pay us $25,000 per acre for the site, which is market value, and they're prepared to close as soon as we can make a decision. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Any questions from the board? Commissioner Brown.
Mr. Hicks, can you put that last slide you had up there, the one with the close-up version?
Yep.
Take that off for me, please. The part that they didn't want there, is that where our issue is going to come in with the rail spur, the big circle there?
This piece right here?
Yeah.
This is our Deaner stream that doesn't have any water in it. We're going to go to the center line of that creek, so they'll own to the center line of the creek. And that portion west of it, we wanted to hold on to that because we think that we might be able to put some smaller facilities out there. There'll have to be five, 7, 10,000 square-foot buildings, but we didn't want to give up that opportunity to maybe sell that for some other user. There's probably little opportunity for them to use it because of the split with the creek. So we're trying to hold on to that plus or minus six acres for some other smaller users.
And that's going to come in off of, I guess, the far upper right of the portion, like you said, that's going to come in?
The rail spur will come in from about right here on the backside of the property, the piece that we recently bought. We bought that house. It'll come in from that side and go to the center part of the site. And I would say that's even subject to continuous revision. We've looked at several proposals from Norfolk Southern, trying to get the grade transition as smooth as they possibly can and minimize the grading cost. It's not out of the question that they may come back and come off the ADS side and go back across the road. That's just a much, much longer run to get it done. We have to, this road gives us some grade transition problems because we have to go across the road flat, carry it across flat, and it gives us less time to drop the grade.
And there's nothing we could do in between the two parcels there, the one where we don't own that house right there yet?
No, we're fine. We recently acquired all this property right here.
Could we come along the back of that building with that rail spur if we came down further to help maybe support something that came on that new piece later on down the road? Or is that just something that's?
The angle at which it's going to cross and that we would have to pull a spur off is so severe that it doesn't meet design guidelines.
I was just trying to help us down the road to see if that would, that was my question.
Yeah. And one of the things we have been working on is making sure that this piece doesn't block the piece adjacent to it that we purchased from rail service from another line. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Any other questions from the board? Are there any citizens wishing to make comment? I think I skipped over that. Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the sale of real property for economic development pursuant to General Statute 158-7.1.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Carpenter, seconded by Commissioner Brown. In discussion? All in favor? Motion is unanimous. Also, thank you, Donnie. I know y'all have, and Steve and I, yes, Steve, I know y'all have worked really hard. I think Commissioner Carpenter's met several times with folks there. At this time, this concludes the public hearing for tonight. The board would like to thank each of you for your input. At this time, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So much.
Motion made by Commissioner Price, seconded by Commissioner Carpenter. In discussion? All in favor? Public hearing has been closed. At this time, we're going to take a one to two-minute business agenda. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve or revise the agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
Well, that's a consent. This is agenda revisions or approvals. So if you're going to pull something, you do it now. Okay, Commissioner Price.
Pull item G.
Item G will be... Commissioner Brown.
Item FF, please.
Are there any other items wish to be, any commissioners wish to pull? Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with items G and FF as items pulled from consent agenda. Commissioner Brown.
Back to comments, please. I'm sorry.
Comments?
I was missing that one. What was that number I, Mickey, we were talking about earlier? Sorry, it's item S. Item S. I just want to make a comment on that. That is very vague that we have for professional services on the portion of that. I don't mind giving the manager discretion, and I'm not saying he doesn't know what he's doing. That's why he's here. But can we, in future reference, can we get a little more detail on that where it's coming, I think it's under page 91?
97.
97.
Commissioner Brown, for the second time, why don't we just pull that and just get your thoughts together and just ask then? Is that okay?
We won't talk about it, Mr. We're not pulling. We're keeping it on there.
You want to keep it on there?
Commissioner Price, I'm on the wrong page. Sorry.
Okay. I think the question to the county manager, if I'm correct, Commissioner Brown, is going forward, when we have, or maybe this is Adana as well, when we have this on the agenda, you want more clarity in the items? You got that, Earl?
So a more in-depth explanation?
Yes, sir, please.
Okay. Commissioner Williams.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question about B. Just want to clarify. This be the time you want to do it? I don't know if I need to pull it. Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah, go ahead and ask the question, yes.
Okay. So I just want to make sure I understand. Are these just, Chief or Commissioner Brown, are these positions just going to be part-time positions, an unnumbered amount of hires that will just add up to 50 hours a week? So for example, possibly five, 10-hour-a-week people. So that's what we're looking at. We just didn't specify how many people. So basically a $20,000, a $26,000 budget transfer is what we're looking at. Okay, that was it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other items that the commission would like to pull at this time? Okay, the motion, no, it was not pulled. The motion is as stated earlier, a motion to approve the agenda with items G and FF pulled to consent agenda. I'll entertain that motion.
So much.
Motion made by Commissioner Carpenter, seconded by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion is unanimous. At this time, I entertain a motion for the approval of minutes. I will put these all together if it's okay. The regular meeting of October 28, 2014, with an ad, these are on the green sheet, a rescheduled meeting of November 13, '24, and an organizational meeting of December 1, 2014, excuse me. meeting of November 13, '24, and an organizational meeting of December 1, 2014, excuse me, the other one was 2014 as well. Motion made by Commissioner Brown, seceded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? Let the record reflect, the motion, the minutes are approved as is. At this time, there are no citizens signed up for citizen recognition. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
No move.
Motion made by Commissioner Price, seceded by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? All in favor? The Consent Agenda is approved. Our next item is NonConsent Agenda. Our first item is Zoning Matters from the Public Hearing, item number one. I think, do we, has the planning board came back with a response? Okay, what is that response, Chuck?
The, on the planning and zoning case, rezoning Z1408, planning board recommends approval on a unanimous vote.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the zoning Z1408 for Anthony and Karen Drum applicant. Motion made by Commissioner Brown, seceded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? Is that okay with that motion? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion is unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Our next item is Item B, Commissioner Price, Social Services Division of Department Health and Human Service, to approve and appropriate funding for 13 positions. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve Item B under NonConsent Agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Carpenter. Is there a second? Well, I'll make the second for discussion. Now, are there any discussion on this item?
Can I ask a question?
Start with you, Commissioner Carpenter. Would you like for Mr. Dobbins to come up?
Yes.
Mr. Dobbins, you please approach the podium. State your name, address, social security number for the record. Thank you, Mr. Dobbins.
Thank you.
My question is that we don't have all of our positions filled at this time, right?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
And now you want to add more?
We have reduced overall in the agency this year 24 positions through reduction in force. The positions that we are asking for is in a specific area. It's not to add on to the already vacant positions, but it's a specific area. Food and FNS program, which is our food and nutrition services, as well as our Medicaid area, better known now in the new world as universal workers. We're asking for one supervisor and 12 staff positions, for a total of 13 positions. These positions basically are gonna be funded through 75% federally funded revenues. 25% would then fall back on the county. We've already been pulling down those resources since the first of the year, essentially to the tune of, I wanna say, let me get the exact number for you, $324,000 that we've already drawn down with no positions funded. In the past six years, we have grown in FNS 55%, which is essentially 20,000 more cases with no additional staff. In the Medicaid arena, we've grown 17%, which is over 8,000 cases, excuse me, 5,000 cases, 8,000 more recipients, again, with no additional staff. We are behind some 3,000 cases in getting them entered into the system, which means a loss of services to our local community, which means they are not receiving the services they are authorized to have. We believe this is very prudent. It's much like we take on the policy of grants. If this funding goes away, the positions would go away. So that is our position, we stand by it. We think it's a very appropriate request, and it's services and staffing that we sorely need to provide services to our community.
Okay, let me understand, is this gonna be a net increase in our employees?
No, sir, no, sir. With this addition of 13, we would still be at a net of a reduction of 11 staff this fiscal year.
Okay.
For an agency of 600 people.
Well, I understand the critical need over there because I met with the staff, along with the manager, and I think some of the rest of the boards met, and
Yes, sir.
We do have some funding issues there, so I support your request.
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
Are there any other questions from the board? Commissioner Price.
Mr. Dobbins, why do you think the need is to go after 13 rather than a smaller number and work up?
We believe that's what it would take to fully handle the current caseload. Obviously, there is no way we believe we're gonna hire 13 people at one time. The interview process, it will take basically time to get those individuals on board. We will hire them as needed, but we believe that's what a fully-staffed unit would look like at the end of the day. We don't wanna ask for four this month, come back and ask for four in three months, four more in six months. We're only gonna hire what we need to handle the caseload. But that's the authorization that we're asking for. If fully-staffed, would handle the new annual, basically, requirement that we have identified in our community.
What if, if the, you said if the funding went away?
Yes, sir.
The positions would go away?
The old way of funding this was at 50%. We now have increased that federal share by 25%, which means it reduces the county's share by 25%. We're asking essentially for a neutral increase. There will be what you would consider county dollars, but no increase to our overall county budget. Because of lapsed salary savings, position savings, we're not asking for an increase. We're asking really to keep the boat from taking on more water. It's not a net increase in positions, it's not a net increase in dollars, but it is, you would be using county dollars because obviously there's a 25% match requirement that the county's gonna have to ante up to continue to fund these positions.
The, if, what if the money, instead of, the federal money didn't go away, but the federal money was reduced, what would, you think would happen to the positions then?
We're not going to increase positions, much like, I keep using the analogy of a grant. If we're increasing by what I would consider 25%, if that 25% that the feds are now giving us was reduced by 25%, we would reduce the positions or the county's share. So we're not gonna, we're not gonna ask for the positions, you agree to it, we get reduced funding, and we keep those positions. We would treat it the same way as a grant. If that federal share is reduced, our staffing would be reduced by an equal amount. Does that make sense?
What, and if the positions were approved, what do you see improving in that department and with the county?
The two things that would immediately be addressed are backlogs and staff load. I think a lot of our departures, a lot of our defections are because staff overload, cases overload. The more staff you have, the less caseload an individual staff member has to carry. That's a huge reduction in stress. The backlog that we have of cases right now certainly could be worked on with more staff on hand. So both of those things would be greatly served by adding additional staff. We had 181 applicants for five positions that we're interviewing. There's no shortage of employment need in this county. There's no shortage of need in the agency. So both a, from a funding standpoint, from an employment standpoint, and from a backlog standpoint, in my opinion, it's a win-win-win, all because the federal government increased our local share by 25 additional percent. And again, going back to where we were six years ago, you know, we saw a 55% increase in caseload with no increase in staff. So the numbers pretty, speak very highly, or speak very loudly of the need to increase our staffing. And again, the bottom line of the agency is not being grown. The bottom line of the agency this year alone is still an 11-staff position reduction, even with the approval of these 13 positions.
Mr. Chairman, I'm comfortable with the proposal as long as the, it's written in there, if the federal money goes away or is reduced, then the staff will be likewise.
Reduced accordingly.
As long as that's in there.
Any other questions from the board? Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Dobbins, I know my concern is when the state implemented NCFAST not long ago, it was to make things more efficient.
Yes, sir.
Now we're talking about increasing our staff by 13.
Yes, sir.
I have trouble reconciling those two things. What I would admit is, sometimes it is, in fairness, it is difficult when you roll things out like this, when you roll something new out, there are some issues, some kinks you're working out, so to be fair, I get that part of it.
Yes, sir.
With that said, once those kinks are worked out, and once everything is rolling smoothly, if indeed NCFAST does make it more efficient, why would we need to keep, even if the federal money's there, why would we need to keep 13 more people than we currently have when the purpose of this was to make it more efficient?
I think your question is very valid. I think you've hired me to report back to you when that does happen. If we don't need staff, my job as a director is to make sure we have an adequate staff to address community need. If NCFAST one day does become, in theory, what it was intended to be, there is a possibility and a probability that efficiencies will be gained and staff need may be reduced. I believe I've been entrusted to bring you that information when that is a reality. At this point in time, that is not a reality. And if our community continues to be served to the level that they deserve, we are going to require these positions in a transition time. Once the bugs, if you will, of NCFAST are worked out, and it becomes the official entity that it's believed it will be, there may very well be an opportunity to reduce staff. And at such time, we would hopefully do that through the least intrusive method, through attrition. We're not hiring people if there's not a need. And we leave a lot of lapsed salary on the table each year because of that approach. So we would approach this the same way.
Well, like I said, I understand that the rollout of NCFAST has been about as successful as the Obamacare website rollout, so I think we recognize how efficient government can be with these things. The question I would have is, why is the federal government allotting money for this when it's a state rollout of NCFAST? When I first looked at, I was thinking it was state money, but it's federal money, right? I was curious why the federal government was giving money.
It's not related to NCFAST. It's related to services individuals need. NCFAST just happens to be a program that North Carolina has, or is trying to implement to make enrollment in these programs more efficient. The programs themselves is what's being funded by the federal government, not NCFAST.
Got you, so when we reference NCFAST?
Yes, sir.
That's not what the federal money is tied to?
No, sir, no, sir. It's to the services that are being provided by the counties and the states.
Well, let me ask you, so moving forward, if NCFAST gains those efficiencies?
Yes, sir.
Could we use these people in some of our other places where we're short-staffed down the road, is that a possibility?
In my opinion, yes. In my opinion, we would reclassify positions based on local community needs or service needs. Once they're county employees, certainly we have that ability to reclassify and redirect our resources.
Okay, I appreciate your thorough responses, Mr. Dobbins, thank you very much.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, I think the motion is going to be to approve and appropriate funding for 13 positions for DHHS, for additional staff needed to reduce caseload and address backlog of applicants' research certification from Medicaid in North Carolina FAST system. And, yes, and if the federal percentage of funding drops, the county funding percentage will drop as well. If the federal funding leaves, the position will be completely defunded. In other words, there'll no longer be a position. And within one year of the first person being hired, the director of DHHS would come back to the board and give us an update on NCFAST system. Is the board pleased with that motion? Who wants to make the motion? Commissioner Price makes a motion? Commissioner Williams, second? Any discussion?
Well, I made a motion, but it's been altered, so.
We amended the motion. He made, he don't have to withdraw his, he made the motion, I made the second. I made the second. Then we amended, there was a motion to amend, which we, it's what we're getting ready to vote on. Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. So the motion to amend has been voted on. Any discussion? We're gonna actually vote on the motion now. The amended motion, any discussion? All in favor? Motion is unanimous.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Thank you for your support, Ms. Buff. Our next item is an item sponsored by the full board to authorize one-time bonus for part-time and full-time county employees. Who would like to make the motion? Commissioner Brown makes the motion. The second is by Commissioner Williams. Okay, we are in discussion. What we have, gentlemen? Well, okay, your motion is for number? Okay. Gentlemen, we have three, excuse me, four different scenarios that we can pick from. I think the motion on the table currently is to authorize a one-time bonus for part-time and full-time county employees. What we'll need to do is amend it to say which option that you would like, you have the options in front of you. Okay. Let's go down the line if that's okay. Commissioner Brown is option four. Commissioner Price is option two. Commissioner Williams, option four. Commissioner Carpenter? Option two. Okay, I will do option three. Thank you, gentlemen. I'll do option four, that will give us a majority. At this, okay, would you like to amend the motion, Commissioner Brown? You made the motion, seceded by. Okay, Commissioner Brown would like us to amend the motion, he made that motion. Commissioner Williams, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, now the actual motion is to authorize a one-time bonus for part-time and full-time county employees, using option number four, a one-time $750 Christmas bonus for full-time, and a one-time $300 bonus for all part-time Gaston County employees. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Our next item is Items Pulled from Consent Agenda, item G. I think that was pulled, I think Mrs. Commissioner Price pulled item G. think Mrs. Commissioner Price polled, item G. Commissioner Price?
Approximately $246,908. Where's that coming from? County funds?
Commissioner Carpenter, you sponsored item G. If that happens, it would have to come from fund balance.
I vote no.
Can somebody get us an answer to Commissioner Price's question? The question is, where would the funds come from to pay for item G?
Now, this was to bring the, bring it into conformity with the air mitigation or federal standards. And it's because we merged with the Lincoln and Cleveland County, we had the, we had the MPOs. It was only in Gaston. When we merged them, it had to be go back and redone to come in conformity with the three county areas. Is that correct? Now, the funding on that is in the budget of that, the MPO, correct?
If I may approach, Mr. Chair, actually, it is a federal grant managed by the state and distributed through the MPOs across the state, including the Gaston, Cleveland, Lincoln MPO, just as you referred to. There's a match that is required by the applicant, which would be the governing board. As to where the money comes from, I'm not certain, but it would be required. I mean, you don't have to, but to participate, to be able to get those federal dollars, you would have to put up matching funds.
Okay. It was my understanding that the money was in...
It's a 20% match.
...what we normally give. I mean, you know, it's our allocation or assessment for each year is part of the MPO. Is that...
I'm not sure of the, of that, of that formula. I'm not certain about that. It's a 20%, it's a 20% match.
Hold one second. Commissioner Carpenter, as it stands, it's probably going to be voted down. Would you like to table it, get more information?
Well, I need to be cleared up because it's my understanding it was already in the budget.
The 20%, the way it works with C-MAC's, C-MAC funding is 20% would be from the applicant from Gaston County, correct? This, but this process, Mr. Chairman, is really just to move the process forward. If any funding is approved, these projects are real, real high on the list. If there is any funding that's going to be, that's going to be appropriated, approved for Gaston County, at that time, it would still come back to the commission. And at that time, the county commission could choose to accept the funding, therefore provide a match. This is not to, this is not to prove any funding tonight. Those numbers were simply just to show what the cost would be associated with it if we did, in fact, get the funding. This is just a matter of moving the application process forward to the State Board of Transportation. There's no guarantee that these projects will get approved, but this process is moving forward. So, that's what this is really about, so.
Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, for example, these are different projects.
Yes, sir.
For example, the tech park, the construction of a greenway expansion, you're going to submit an application. If it's funded, you would come back and ask for $76,860 from us?
Yes, sir.
So, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay. So, if we're already not willing to commit $77,000 for that, there's no need to even go down the road to put you guys through the application process, right? Do I understand that correctly?
But this is the process that they've set up, correct? You can't vote it, I mean, you can't vote it down tonight. I just wanted to clarify that this wasn't for funding. We won't know until they, until they let us know if we're going to get these projects approved. At that point, then we'll come back and say, do you really want to go forward with these projects or not? You don't have to. It doesn't obligate the county, county any kind of way at this point tonight.
Well, like I said, I don't know that all the projects, that all three are bad. I can certainly tell you that that wouldn't be one that I would support spending that much money on. So, I don't know if there's any way for us to maybe table this and take a look at, could we do this individually? Do we have to do them all as one resolution? Is it something you guys can come back to us and give us three different resolutions? Because the others may be okay. I've not really looked into them in depth. I do know that one really doesn't make sense for that kind of money.
I think, I think, Commissioner Williams, I think that there's, there's a process, a deadline of getting these on that agenda in Raleigh. And so, part of what, in dealing with the MPO and beyond Hanson, was that we needed to go ahead and get it, get it on the agenda, and that will move it forward. But to answer your question, I guess you could pull that, but I don't think it would make this round coming up, so.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Well, are we on...
Commissioner Carpenter, would you like to, this is on the non-consent agenda. Would you like to completely pull it off, or do you want to vote on it?
Well, I was going to ask, are we in any critical timeline to get the application in?
It's my, it's my understanding, we are, we're already, they wanted this on the agenda, of course, in early December, but I told them, I said, we don't have another meeting until December 9th. And the MPO said that was okay as long as we had it on the agenda. And so, I assume sometime in January, they're going to go forward with it. So, but we are at a, my understanding, a pivotal point with these projects.
Okay. Well, you know, I just say vote on it if this board wants to approve it, okay. But I, I think that, I had some questions about that funding because it was my understanding that, was it 26, 76,000? That would be, it says a county, but I thought that was all of the cities within the county and the county, which our part was going to be much less than that. So, but anyway, I don't mind applying for the application for it. We'll make that decision later if the board could agree to that.
At this time, Commissioner Carpenter makes the motion to approve a resolution to support the three county proposed projects through federal congestion mitigation and air quality. That is the motion. Is there a second? This time, the motion dies for lack of a second. Thank you, gentlemen. Our next item from consent agenda is item FF. Commissioner Williams, Phil Beck and Carpenter, Human Resources, to approve Karamont Regional Medical Center to provide comprehensive wellness program.
I make the motion to approve it.
Motion made by Commissioner Carpenter?
Second.
Secuted by Commissioner Brown. Okay. Any discussion? Commissioner Brown?
My question is, since this is going to be a building block for our community and I asked Pam to come and talk about it, it says a five-year physical plan. We're already at the...
Three-year plan.
So, it's just three-year plan?
Mm-hmm.
Because I just saw the 2,000, right there above it, it says five-year physical plan.
Oh, sorry.
So, that's why I was asking that, because if, we're already at the end of 2014. That was my question. I was trying to find out how that sort of communicated together. So, thank you for answering the question.
Sorry. Anytime.
Any other questions from the board?
Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
Well, we'll...
Commissioner Price?
At some point, will we get a update how well it's working, or if it needs to be changed to make it work better or something before the three years is up?
Ms. Overcash?
Yes. Because this is a comprehensive plan, that there will be data, and this will be very data-driven plan, and we will be able to report to you every year. The first year will be a baseline. So, we will be taking everybody's measurements and then, but in the second year, we should be able to report to you what improvements we have made in the previous year.
Do you think you can, excuse me, any other questions?
Improvements will hopefully lead to lower health care costs, possibly?
Yes. Mitigated health care costs. I'm not going to say they're going to go down because health care costs are rising, but it absolutely has the potential for saving us money. Yes.
Any other questions? Commissioner Price?
No.
Commissioner Brown?
I just had, was there a way we could get, I know it's hard to get 100% participation, that we could somehow maybe figure that? That's going to be the biggest thing, is what kind of participation we get for this. And I think if it's that big of a deal, like we talked about, and the spouses are also involved as well, trying to figure out how we can ramp up, I know we do things for the blood drive and different things, so I was trying to think, maybe you three could come out of the box with something that could up the participation value of that.
There will be incentives for participation. And we actually had this program a few years ago, and we suspended it. But when we had the program running and when we were offering incentives, as a voluntary program, we had 96% participation. So, we anticipate the same.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate, we have a couple of representatives from Karamont, Miss Debbie Bellinger, Betty Abear, is that close? And Alex Mullenax is with us. So, we appreciate them three being with us here tonight if we had any questions about it. Commissioner Price, to your point, not only is this something that we're looking at mitigating our health insurance costs, this type of program is proven to cut back on work comp claims. It improves your morale. It improves productivity. So, there's a lot of issues out there that this is going to have a benefit for Gaston County. And, you know, you sitting on the HHS board, you know our health ranking in North Carolina. I think this shows Gaston County is being proactive in taking the leadership role and trying to improve health care in Gaston County. There's a couple of things with this that are pretty flexible that I want to share with the board, that, you know, like Ms. Overcash said, we talked about establishing a baseline. If at some point down the road, if, you know, we have a full-time employee, if we thought we wanted to cut them back, we could. If we liked having the full-time person, you know, we can do that. So, if I understand correctly, we actually have some flexibility moving forward with this. And I think that gives this board some leeway with, you know, how we want to handle it. But this is a very comprehensive plan. I support it and think you guys did a really good job putting it together. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Any other discussion? I think I did have one question from Mr. Mullenax. Just giving him a hard time. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Our next item is appointments. Commissioner Brown, is there any appointments you want to make for... Commissioner Price?
Yes, I have three, Mr. Chairman. I'd make them all at one time. To the Economic Development Commission, reappoint Richard Cromlich Jr. To the Environmental Review Advisory Board, reappoint Zach Horn. And to the Fire Advisory Board, reappoint Mr. Jeff Hovis.
I'll make the second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got one Fire Advisory Board, Mr. Brian Waiteth.
Second.
Secuted by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Carpenter?
I have four. The Environmental Review Advisory Board, Mr. Bob Hovis. Fire Advisory Board, Mark Riddlesel. Those are reappointments. And the Gaston County Board of Adjustment, Peggy Leonard. And the social, Sarah Local Planning Committee, Michael Plummer.
I'll make those seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two for the Environmental Review and Advisory Board. Mr. Roger D. Hurst. Soil and Water will provide that to Ms. Buff. And also, the Library Board of Trustees, Jacob Brett Keeter.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Is that it? Okay. I have a couple. A reappointment of Mr. Rondell S. Guffey to the Economic Development Commission.
Second.
And Brian Robinson to the Fire Advisory Board.
Second.
Commissioner Carpenter seconds those. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Okay, we have some chairman vacancies and then full board vacancies. Donna?
Donna.
We have terms ending 12, 2014. So, we need to go ahead and vote on these. Okay. The COG, I'm assuming Commissioner Carpenter would still like to attend?
Where do you see that?
This is a, you may want to flip your page.
I did. I thought...
You may not have them. But either way, would you like to continue to serve on COG?
Yeah, but I think that Commissioner Williams is serving as an alternate.
He is. He's ex officio voting.
Okay. Yeah, I'll continue. One more year.
You'll continue one more year. Commissioner Williams, will you continue?
Just say I do.
Okay. At this time, I entertain a motion to appoint Commissioner Carpenter and Jason Williams. To, Commissioner Carpenter will be the delegate and Commissioner Williams the alternate to COG. Motion made by Commissioner Price, seconded by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Transportation Advisory Committee? Okay, this is the TAC Committee.
I don't have those.
And Commissioner Fraley no longer wants to serve on the Transportation Advisory Committee?
Commissioner Brown said he'd do it.
Motion to, motion made by Commissioner Price to appoint Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion is unanimous. Then, we have a Transportation Advisory Committee elected, actually, Commissioner Carpenter. I'll make the motion to appoint Commissioner Carpenter.
Second.
Transportation Advisory Committee as well. He will be the delegate.
Delegate.
Secuted by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Okay, gentlemen, we have some full board vacancies.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to appoint Joe Grigg and Bobby James Tate to the Equilation and Review Board as the two at-large positions.
I will second that. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. I think we... Okay.
Well, I believe that...
Joe Waters.
They have a different application.
Joey.
Motion made by Commissioner Brown to appoint David Kloniger, Conrad Pogregowski, and Joey Arthur.
Second.
Secuted by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion is unanimous. Commissioner Brown, would you like to continue to serve on the Fire Advisory Board? I'll make that motion.
Second.
Secuted by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. We have no more qualitative resources. Okay. At this time, we also need to appoint a voting delegate, designation of a voting delegate for the 2015 NCAA legislative goals conference. Commissioner Carpenter, would you like to serve on that?
I can.
Second.
Motion made by myself, seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion is unanimous. At this time, are there any Commissioners Committee reports? Commissioner Brown?
Not this time, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Price?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I have two. Tended the Gaston family... Attended the Gaston Family Health Service meeting in November. The highlight of that meeting is to give you an update on the senior total living care at the former Circuit City site. We now have 76 patients enrolled. The state is allowing an enrollment of six per month, and we are, easily have six per month that apply, so we should be at a break-even point by the end of the year. Also planning a dementia and Alzheimer's unit at that site that is in the planning stages right now and should come to fruition. When that site was developed, there was space, about 500, 5,000 square feet left for an Alzheimer's unit, so that is, the space is already there. Some of you may be familiar with the name of Ted Koppel. Mr. Koppel, Mr. Koppel is going to be in Gastonia on Friday. Gaston Family Health Services has been chosen of four sites in North Carolina. It's going to be one of four sites for a COPD unit, outpatient rehab. Mr. Koppel will be at Gaston Family Health Service on December the 12th, between 8:30 and 9 o'clock to give a, Gaston Family Health Service will give a presentation on the site, where it will be and, and the, where it will run from. So, want to give you an update to look out for.
And that was Ted Koppel?
His wife has COPD, that's why he's involved in that. Also, the Gaston Family Health Service, the revenues are currently running $152,117 over expenses for the year. Doing okay. We should get a cost settlement of about $600,000 from the state, once they get NCFAST up and going, so. Also attended the DHHS board meeting. I would like to give you an update on lapse salaries. They are currently running for both divisions, $831,502 for lapse salaries as of 11/4. The, nothing else to report out of that. It was a pretty regular board meeting, and that's, we did get an Ebola update, and there's no new cases to report on there. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Price. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No report at this time, just wanted to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and I hope this time of year, you guys will try to find somebody less fortunate. I know the Salvation Army Angel Tree is a great place to go. I think the Department of Social Services also has an angel tree, so if you don't have any ideas on how you'd like to give back, if you want to contact our clerk, she can help you with that. But we've got some people in our county that, that are very needy, and it would really be, be an uplifting thing for them, if you're willing to help them out, so appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Mr. Bailey's could help with a pair of pants. He must be needy wearing those. Commissioner Carpenter?
Well, just briefly, our last Economic Development Commission, Mr. Hicks was able to line up a tour of projects that we've been able to attract in the last few years. Some of them most recently, and probably the most significant was Oats Corning. If you've been over to Tech Park, that facility, I think they got a roof on it where they can work in most any kind of weather, and it's moving along quite well. So that's going to be a significant addition to our community, those very, very good-paying jobs it's bringing. We visited many other facilities during that tour. This shows some of the work that we've been able to do in it, and it's, and it hadn't been easy for us to, to come up with the funds to invest in these parks that we have. I know we have a business group now that's going to be assisting us with that, and I look forward to meeting. I hope everybody can attend. I believe that's on Monday from about, what, 5 to 7, or something like that. It's going to be over here at the conference center, and I hope each one of you can attend. Please make a special effort to be there.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Just have a few, just want to give the board an update. Commissioner Carpenter and I will be meeting with a North Carolina DOT Rail Division next Wednesday to go over applicants for the PNN at 11. Just want to give you a heads up on that. And for right now, that'll be all. Next items, count, next item is the County Managers' Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be very, very brief this evening, just a couple of items I'd like to, to mention. The first of which is, we have initiated our efforts to plan the forthcoming Gaston County magazine, and we have pulled together some resources that will aid in that, that process with the projected publication date of April 1st. I recently completed a request for proposals for travel and tourism that would produce an analysis of tourism potential for Gaston County, and we look forward to issuing that RFP probably within the next couple of weeks. And then finally, we just today received an appraisal on the property that we're looking at for animal control, and we will continue to negotiate with the owner to see if we can find some common ground in terms of price for that property. That concludes my report. Be happy to respond to any questions you might have.
Commissioner Price?
I just have an announcement. Go ahead.
Okay. We'll go to the County Attorney's Report.
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I think Commissioner Price has an announcement.
I'd just like to say, I want to congratulate my son-in-law and daughter for their new arrival that happened yesterday. I have a new grandson.
Congratulations.
Eight pounds, 14 ounces, and his name is Finn, F-I-N-N. So, have a, we'll have a very Merry Christmas this year, I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Price. I'm sure that he's taller than I am already.
Eight pounds, 14.
This concludes our rescheduled meeting for tonight. Our next regular meeting is January 27th, 6:00 p.m. at the Harley B. Gaston Junior Public Forum Courthouse. The commission wishes everyone a very Merry Christmas, a happy and prosperous new year. Thank you for allowing us to also have a little fun. It's our last meeting of the year, and a work session and a board meeting together, so it's, it's, it's been fun. Also, it's Commissioner Brown's birthday. He is 72. At this time, we thank you for watching. If you have questions or comments, please telephone Eric Clark, Donna Spectacular, Buff, at 704-866-3196, and share them. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Commissioner Brown. Secuted by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? This meeting is adjourned.